Alrighty, so it is my pleasure to start our regular Groton Board of Education meeting. Today is October 26 and it is about 6:04 and we have a we have a quorum and our first thing that's on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and I am wondering if Dr. Grenier, if you would be willing to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would be honored.
Thank you.
Hi. My screen up here a little bit. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Grenier. And also just for those of us who do or don't know, last week, the Board of Education had a special meeting before the Committee of the Whole in order to interview and then also to vote on our newest board member. He was at that point a candidate and now he's a board member. So Dean, I would like to officially welcome you to your first regular Board of Ed meeting as a Board of Ed member and we are extremely excited about your coming aboard along with us and actually he's already been incredibly busy in terms of all the meetings that we've had so far. So, but Dean.
Thank you, Kim. Like a bad penny, I keep turning up.
We're kind of liking that. Um, and so the next one is the recognition and participation of visitors and delegations. Dr. Grenier, I don't see anything on there, but I'm actually hoping, Andrea, do you think next month we could at least talk about our new scholars that have come from the Fitch High School?
Yes, we usually did that in February, but I would prefer to do it now. So, yes.
Okay, so in November, maybe we can put that on our agenda and then at least, if they can't come, maybe we can.
Oh, they'll be here.
All right, um, all right. So, but Dr. Grenier, is that all?
Well, yes, but I did have two agenda items that I was hoping that the Board could vote to add.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I believe everyone was sent that later, earlier this afternoon and it was two possible motions. One, and I believe both of them, Dr. Grenier, you're going to talk about it in your notes and then I also believe the other one will be in the Business Managers' Report. Is that correct?
Correct. The item that would be added would be discussion and possible action regarding a virtual mentoring program.
Yep.
And the other one would be discussion and possible action regarding the Alliance District School Building Budget Proposal.
Does the Board have any issue about adding those two at the end of our new business?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so do I have, most people have said yes to that?
Well. There should be a motion.
Oh, Dean, you're right. Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move we add those two items to the agenda.
Second.
I'll second it.
I've got Rita for second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adding the two items to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion is carried. Dean, thank you. The next section, and I know I should remember this, but I think last month, we actually asked if people had anything that they wanted to share with us to throw it in the chat or make sure that I'm, and Caitlin, maybe I'm going to need your help to recognize people, but this is the portion that we hear from the community and the Board welcomes that. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or lessens and should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton and Board members will only ask questions at this point in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizen portion of the Board meeting. Citizens should state their names and addresses for the record. Caitlin, do you see anyone?
No, I don't think so.
Hearing none. We are going to be moving on to the Student Representative Report and is Zay here?
I think the scholarship went to his head.
And is our new student representative here?
I'm sorry. You know what? I'm going to have to reach out to both of them somehow. They didn't tell me they weren't going to come, but I'll make it a point to meet with them tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Grenier. And once you're done with your report, you will be on.
Right. Okay, so last week, if you remember, you, the Board was hoping they would go into a little bit of detail about contact tracing. I think it'd be helpful just for everybody to know a little bit about the protocol. When we receive information that someone has tested positive, we either get that from the individual or we get that from the Ledzlight Health District. And when that happens, that case then is we, Ledzlight Health District calls that person and tries to determine all the people that were within six feet for more than 15 minutes. And then what then Ledzlight actually calls us, if it's a school person. And we then do our own contact tracing and I can tell you that we are far more conservative with our contact traces. So we, in the case last week, for example, the individual who had tested positive indicated there were two people in the school that they were close to. They were close contacts. And in fact, we identified 16 people. So when a person is identified as a contact, we, the school district, typically the principal or actually frequently the school nurse will call that person and inform them that they are a contact and that means that they are to remain quarantined for 14 days. And we strongly encourage them to get tested and then to report the test results to us immediately. That has been going on since the beginning, well, since we've come back to school since September 8th and we have followed that protocol. The other really important thing about that protocol, which we have not been particularly successful at communicating, is that when someone is recommended to be tested, either because they're symptomatic, they're sick, the fever, or some other symptom of COVID, or they're told that they are a contact, they need to stay home and away from school for 14 days. And in some cases, we've had individuals come back too soon and it's, the 14-day period, by the way, is that once we figure out if somebody who may have been exposed to COVID, it takes about 14 days maximum for the virus to possibly show up as a contagious virus for the person. So the 14 days is not a magical number. It's, we believe that during that time, if COVID does not manifest itself, then the person can come back to school. So that's the, that's the big, that's the big protocol that we've been following and we have been really diligent about this. And as I said in a couple of recent notes, I, it seems like, I mean, daily contact, I don't want to jinx myself. I didn't get a report today. But it's been almost daily contact that Ledzlight will call us, we call Ledzlight or the Department of Public Health. And so that's one thing. The second thing I wanted to address is the notion that we have been included, that Groton has been put on a red alert. That means, that means a couple of things for the town. It means, well, first of all, it means that there are more than 15 cases per 100,000 for the town. And by virtue of that, the town can move from stage three, phase three, which allows restaurants to be open at 75% and so forth, back to phase two. Groton has opted not to do that, but we have closed, I know the town has closed recreational facilities, particularly where people were congregating, like basketball courts. For schools, it really means two things. One, we didn't need a reminder, but they tell us it's very important that you reinforce your mitigation strategies of wearing masks, maintaining six-foot social distance and frequent hand washing. The other thing is, it means that the town is encouraged to expand testing, including the people who are healthy, who actually may be asymptomatic. And so I did speak to the Director of Ledzlight today and we are expanding the facilities in Groton for people.
At least he's not frozen with a silly face.
Yeah, but he doesn't know. We don't know what he's saying.
We'll inform him. So Mike, you were frozen for about 30 seconds.
Oh, that was, and I had some really pearls of wisdom that came out at that time. Anyway, I said that we're expanding testing. Did you get that part? That we're using, we're going to use our parking lots to expand testing. The other thing I want to talk about is however, in the schools, particularly, and I know there are a number of emails that were sent from teachers at the middle school, there are two things going on in all of our schools. The first thing is that the hybrid learning model is incredibly difficult to implement. It means that you have about a third of your kids in front of you at any one time. A third of your kids are there only two days a week, so the other third are home for two or three days a week. And then another third are home at all times. And so a teacher in a hybrid model, he's trying to present material, put out lessons, have live stream conversations, respond to emails, respond to personal personal texts and emails from parents and students in some cases. And that is extremely difficult and I have been, as I keep putting in my notes, my Board notes, I've been having teacher focus groups and that has been a huge focus of what I've tried to talk about, that we know that the hybrid model is difficult. We are trying to provide as much support as possible. There's been some team teaching that has gone on. The hybrid model at the elementary level, at least I have to thank Jamie for setting me up with a nice conference last week. I met with several teachers last week and I thought they were going to be concerned with safety of the building and we quickly settled that issue. I think people feel, at least at Clonchester, relatively comfortable. They really wanted to talk about, the special area teachers really wanted kids to come into their rooms, art teacher, one of the art kids, children to come into the art room and the music room and so forth. And so we, this week, I think we're going to move forward with that recommendation. We also talked about having, hiring probably teachers and tutors, but mostly teachers to support kids, using some of our Corona relief funds, to hire teachers to be tutors after school to help kids. I was in a conversation with one person that, she contacts several students a day. Well, several, like four, and their families don't speak English. So the amount of help they get at home is obviously limited. But let me turn my attention to the middle school that has, really has some unique problems. Number one, we are, we are opening, we opened on the 8th of September, a brand-new building, but we didn't take full occupancy of it until this week. We didn't get the gym until this week and we didn't get the, we get the theater and the coral area. And so there have been problems with the facility. There have been problems with the technology, serious problems with technology. In fact, when I was there this morning, Susan and I met with the administration, we got a note that the building, the building lost Wi-Fi, which means there's no Google Classroom, which means if I'm planning a lesson, my lesson just went out the tubes, down the tubes, because I can't, I can't present that lesson. But in addition to that, we've had, we've had Promethean boards that were improperly installed by the manufacturer, by whoever installed them, and we are working to resolve that. But in the meantime, the Promethean boards are not fully operational. Huge problem. The other thing is we, we are about 150, which is, you know, more than one per teacher. We have these document cameras that are very important for projecting lessons, particularly in the hybrid model. We are 150 short. We ordered them. They're on back order. So that's been a huge problem. Taking attendance, particularly at the middle school, actually particularly at the middle school and the high school, because they're such large buildings and we just today got a few software that will put a little icon next to a child so we'll know which cohort the child is in. That has been taking a large amount of time. But the biggest, the biggest issue at the middle school, because unlike the elementary school where a teacher has 20 or so students, at the middle school, teachers can have 100, 120 students and trying to produce those lessons and get the lessons out is a huge problem. And so what we, Susan and I went over and met with the administration today and we talked about how do we support the teachers to keep the hybrid model alive? We know last spring's experience was not good. Way too many students were disengaged and going back to, going back to a full, full-distance learning, we don't think is the best thing for the kid. But what we do acknowledge is we don't, we don't have a vibrant, robust, engaging hybrid model right now and we need, we need to work on that. So I'm having two meetings. Actually, Beth Horler and I are going to meet with several of the building representatives tomorrow morning to try to see if we can't get a better handle on how we solve these problems. And of course, the administration will join us. The second is I have a focus group with other teachers during the noon hour. And actually, I got emails today from teachers who couldn't make that and so I'm going to, I'm going to create a couple of other opportunities to have focus groups. It's, it's important that we try to get a, we, the administration, get a better handle on what these challenges are. But it's also very clear to me that what we need to do is to put a hybrid program together that will allow us to present lessons so that ultimately we develop the professional skills, which a lot of us don't have. One of the, one of the things that's very clear to me, as I said to administrators this morning, a year ago, we all felt pretty competent. We knew how to work technology. We knew how to supervise classes. Teachers knew how to present lessons. They were well organized. And we have been thrust into the world of novices. We don't know how to do all these things, admittedly. Some of us know far better than others. And what I, what I sense is there are plenty of people in each of the buildings who know how to do things, but know how to do technology. But one of the things Susan has really pushed and I'm happy to say we achieved it, is there, each building had a tech representative, like a teacher who would help out with tech skills. We added two at the high school, two at the middle school and one more at each, two more at the middle school and one more at each elementary school. Now there are going to be at least two or three colleagues in the building that will get a stipend, will pay for it out of the Corona, Coronavirus Relief Fund, that will be able to be there to help teachers after school, during a common prep, if they have it. We also hired this week two temporary technicians. We have, we have five technicians. As Dennis Kolclaw pointed out to me, we have about 5,000 computers. And we have five technicians. So you can only imagine one technician trying to support 1,000 computers is not particularly reasonable. So what, what we're going to do is we are going to continue to collaborate and try to get all these ideas on the table. I've had some good email exchanges with teachers over the last couple of days. But the, the middle school is unique, for sure. It's a new building. It's a bit intimidating. We've had, we've had two positive cases at the middle school. We've had two or three positive cases actually at other schools also. But I certainly understand, the first one we had at the middle school was very large. There were 40, 42 people were identified as contacts. Fortunately, contacts meaning they were within six feet for more than 15 minutes. I asked Laurie Lapine today for the results of the tests and zero, zero people came back positive. You know, and I don't say that in any cavalier way because it could, it could change tomorrow. We could start to see cases, but right now, it would appear that our mitigation strategies seem to be working well in terms of protecting the health and safety of students and staff. And I would say that the hybrid model is not working well and we need, we need a lot of work and we have, we have our, we have our technology skills that need to be sharpened. We have some curricular, I know the first six weeks or so, Susan and her crew did some great work this summer. I know on November 3rd, there's going to be a whole group of people that are going to do more curriculum. But I would, I would not want to say that our hybrid is where we want it to be. I think we are far away from coming in all full. My grandchildren in West Hartford went in, everybody, five days a week, starting today. I don't think we're at that point. I certainly don't think our hybrid model is, I mean, our full-distance learning from last spring makes me feel that we can meet the needs of children, especially in an inequitable way. We have way too many kids who are disengaged. We need to get a way more engaging distance learning, remote learning program. So I think, I think that's where we are. We've got a lot of, a lot of work ahead of us. But you know, as I said in my Board notes, I think, I think there are two problems staring us in the face. Health and safety is one problem and how to make this hybrid learning reasonable is the other. And we, I think we understand the challenges and we're working towards solutions.
So Mike, I know, I'm going to ask, I'm going to stop us at this point and have the Board ask questions and I know that Jay has raised his hand, so I'm going to recognize Jay.
So just to get a little perspective, I was reading that Steve Mansfield, the Director of Ledzlight, indicated that you go into red in the town of Groton. Or is it, or is it the whole district? Do you know? Is it the whole?
No, it's not a district thing. It's a town thing.
Okay, so based on the town, because of our population, you go into red when there's seven infections. Because it's 15 per 100,000 and I believe we have 47,000 or 48,000. Now, my question is, the outbreak at one of our local health facilities that I'm told resulted in 33 infections, are they counted in that number? In your interactions with Steve, do you know if that's true or not?
I know it's not true. If you're referring to, to, like a nursing home, nursing homes and prisons are excluded.
Okay, so those seven are in the community?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Rita, but you're not muted. You need to unmute. And then Liz.
Dr. Grenier, what about general dynamics? They've had quite a few cases. Does that count for the cases in Groton?
Yes.
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 So they aren't, they are recently. Besides the technology at the middle school, have you thought about adjusting the caseload for the teachers? I know that at the high school, they take fewer classes than that are offered at the middle school. Is there some way we could possibly adjust the caseload so that teachers are not seeing quite as many students per day? And they aren't so overwhelmed with work and?
Before I answer that question, I would want to talk to Claire DePeter-Powers, who is the guru in this area. Yeah, I mean, we, I'm, I'm interested in anything we can do. For example, Seth Danner has an idea, which I'm attracted to, at the, at the elementary school, of course, that we might take, if you could picture three classes of a fourth grade, he thinks maybe what we should do is take all the full-distance learners and give them to one teacher and take the other, take, take the kids in the, in the three remaining classes, combine them into two and then have the, have the teachers, the two teachers just teach the hybrid cohort kids. The fly in that ointment is that if you and I are the two teachers, I've got my kids on Monday and Tuesday in, but I've also got the kids who are home. And so you still have the, I mean, it's not, it's not quite as big, so maybe that would be helpful. So we're, that's a dialogue that is continuing and I, I think we might be able to do something and I know Claire is going to join us, I hope, in the morning with Beth and we'll put that on the table.
But Dr. Grenier, I know other school systems, Fairfield being one, they are having even their elementary classes come in and only teaching the core subjects. And then their specials are done online, even their gym, their art, their music, or whatever it is, so that they're, they're not there as long of a time. And you know, there's, there's a possibility that even in middle school, you'd be able to take maybe three courses on Monday and maybe three, you know, every other day or something has to be done because to have that many students in the middle school, I think is just way too much, you know, teaching that many, have that many preparations. And do they have temperature checks and are they tested? You said something about the parking lots. Are you talking about parking lots in our schools or parking lot at the senior center or where?
Well, they asked me if they could use parking lots like on weekends for drive-through.
Oh, okay.
They're not, the answer to your question is, we're not taking temperatures as children walk into the schools.
Or teachers.
Or teachers. That's right.
Thank you.
Liz.
Yeah, Dr. Grenier, I've received, you all have, a number of emails that have been very distressing. And I would like you to address more of the health and safety, well-being of our teaching staff. And just to clarify something. And just to clarify something too, the high school teachers too have a workload of 125-plus students. So if you're going to, what you're going to do to the middle school, it's going to happen the same thing in the high school. And I really think that, um, I was, I was thinking about this, and we're coming up to the holiday season. And I know you're not a big fan of the, of full remote. But I'm thinking, you know, Halloween's coming. Kids are going to be at trick-or-treating. Who knows if they're going to do that? And then we've got a couple of days where we've got professional development. And then comes Thanksgiving, families together, then comes Christmas. Why don't we take a break? Why don't we just, and I'm not saying full distance for the rest of the year. I'm saying let's, let's everybody take, catch our breaths and give the people a chance to recoup and recover, gain strength, have time for some of the, um, you know, the training that they need to have. You know, the thing is, is that we've pushed these and pushed these teachers to the limit. And when I hear of people who are crying before, in school, and why they can't get into the car because they're so stressed, I'm sorry, that's unacceptable. And we're going to find a way to support our teaching staff. So I really would like to know what our strategies are going to be to help, help our teachers to deal with this crisis.
Physically.
Physically, emotionally. We need a support.
Let me, let me start.
So I, 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 what I want to be careful about is that we're getting into the weeds about the, some of this stuff. I think that, Dr. Granier, I think that you've heard both Rita's concern and Liz's concern about that. I think we all share that. But I, I think we have to, this is not the working meeting, nor is that the level that the board, I think, should be on. Um, but I, I think, Dr. Granier, you've heard the marching orders, right? Is, is that, and, excuse me, and Susan as well. Sorry, you're off in the right corner, didn't, didn't see you. Is, is the, is that we are really concerned about what, what's, what does this mean for us, our staff? What does this mean for our families? What does this mean for our students? What are we doing for our students who are, who are not being able to, um, who are not being able to be reached? And I think that you've heard that. And I think we can then somewhat move on from that. Because once again, I, I'm, I'm going to get scared that we're going to get into the weeds, and that's not really the job of the board.
One thing I'll say, Kim, because I like to say it as many times as possible. If we continue the mitigation strategies, Liz?
Yeah.
I, I think, when, when I, I thought that was going to be the big topic when I spoke to the Clodchester teachers. And it seems like, wear your mask 100% of the time, stay six feet away, and wash your hands as frequently. That seems to be, the epidemiologist say it, over and over and over again. They might say a few other things, but they always go back. Those are the three mitigation strategies. That, and contact tracing. And now we'll add one, one thing that I'm very happy with, is increased testing. That, that, that will, that I, I think will protect us a, a great deal. You know, and, and I, and I say that as, as a person who goes into the schools all the time, and my grandchildren go into the schools all the time. I, you know, I, 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 I'm with you.
I know you are. And I don't mean to.
No, no, I don't.
I'm just really concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
And all, and all for everybody.
Yeah, me, me, me too. I'm, I'm with you.
Any others, or can Dr. Granier move on to the next topic?
So, the next topic, I'm happy to report, is, I'm just going to, if, Kate, can you let me share my screen?
It should, it should be working.
Yeah. Thank, thank you. So I, I, I just wanted to, whoops. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have this, we had this, this really terrific map that Mike Zubba and Pat Galker gave to us. And we, we put it out, and people were able to determine, based upon their address, which school they would go to under the new recommended system. And I spoke to Sue Dean Shinbrot, who was monitoring the, the email. And she said, there weren't too many more new emails. But, but she said, almost, almost everyone indicated, they, they just wanted a little bit of clarification. Once they got the clarification, there was a high degree of satisfaction. And she was surprised that a number of people indicated that they were very appreciative that this system is going to deliver racial and socioeconomic balance to the district without redor, redrawing district lines. And so I, I, I think this is, if, it's later for, for the board to vote on. But if, if this, if this recommended plan goes, goes forward, I am, I'm going to be thrilled to tell you on September 1st that we will have completely, these two schools will be nearly perfectly racially balanced. In other words, each school will have about 47, 48% of the children will be children of color. And, and we will be able to maintain that through, through the, the magnet theme. The other, the other thing I, I want to highlight is that Northeast Academy this year, we, we made it a point to make sure people understood there was an opportunity to go to Northeast Academy. And we, we took in a whole other kindergarten class. And 30% of that class were kids of color. So that, that, that school is, that, that school is, is approaching an impending imbalance. And I, I think that 30% of those children will move the school to even greater racial balance. So I, I think I would strongly recommend that the, that the board adopt the recommended plan, which, which, as you know, basically keeps Katherine Kolnowski exactly where it is. That, that, as I said, the, the children who go to Katherine Kolnowski will continue to go to Katherine Kolnowski. The children who go to Mary Morrison will go to the new school that's on Branda G. Avenue. I didn't want to say anything, I didn't want to throw Jim Streeter off. I, I could offend him by picking a name out. The children who go to Barnum, that, that was one of the questions, actually. The military community, they wanted to be sure that their kids who go to Barnum will continue to go to Barnum, and that will be true. The Northeast Academy kids will, will go to Northeast. There is a little bit of a section here, but those children who live north of, north of Clodchester School, if they choose, they're, they're, they're being zoned to Northeast Academy. But if they choose, they could always join the lottery to come to the school on Fishtown Road. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I think this has been a long time in the making, and I think we have a terrific plan.
Do I have questions from the board?
Kim, Dr. Granier, you said that they could join the Fishtown School, that area. But you also are grandfathering them in. They have siblings at the school, correct?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, this ends in Bel Air, right? Do I have the right name now? So, yeah, these, these children will stay if they want to, to go to Northeast. And the, the, the other people, the new families will actually go to this school. It's, it's within walking distance. That's why we did that.
Any other questions, knowing that we are going to be voting on this?
Dr. Granier, I know we, we discussed this, and for those watching at home, we, we've had extensive discussions about this over the past year, in committees of the whole. But just to clarify, I know there were concerns about a couple of neighborhoods. And my recollection was that you had focus groups with some parents in those neighborhoods. And, and they are, they have no concerns about the, the new lines.
Yes. I, I specifically conducted a, a focus group of parents from Branford Manor. And I explained to them, of course, the school is going to be close. The, the people who live on, on, on Branford Avenue, the school would be close. And however, because their children currently go to Clodchester, they would go to the, the new, the new school at the Cutler site. And they, they understood the, the racial implications of that, and they were very supportive, actually.
Thank you. Any other questions? Here, Enon, I'm going to move us on. Susan, I think that's you. But I can't hear you.
Hello, everyone. I get to talk about the two new element. Kim, excuse me.
Yes, Joan.
Isn't Dr. Granier to discuss the mentoring program?
No, we're going to do that at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for keeping me, me honest, Joan.
So I would like to do a shout out for our committee that has worked so hard on naming and looking at the themes. It's been a couple-year journey, actually, when I look back at some of the agendas. And I just wanted to say that last year, in January, I actually brought the themes, the theme survey to the board to show them what the teachers were thinking. There was a follow-up in June to really discuss both the naming and the themes. And the committee had made some recommendations to the board. But the board had recommended to me to go back to the committee, bring in a historian, Jim Streeter, who happens to be here with us, and three board members. And that really worked out very well. So when we first set up the committees, each of the principals, Jamie Giordano at Claude, Steve Wheeler at SB Butler, and Kathy Minor at Mary Morrison, had community members, parents, students, and staff on each of their committees. Then we brought those committees together to have some deep conversation. And we, we noticed that one of the things that was really recommended was that we not name each of the new elementaries the same as the middle school. And, you know, there were other discussions as well. So I just wanted to kind of give you the history before I start in with the actual themes. And I'm going to share and get you the magnet themes. Can you see this? So these are the results of the survey. We had 398 parents, student, students, and community members who filled out the theme survey. We had teachers and staff fill out the survey results, 186 of them. And one of the questions that we asked was, what is the most interesting elementary magnet theme to you? And they, they could pick more than one. But I have to tell you that it came out for both the community and parents, students, and the teachers very similarly, that environmental marine life science at 43% for the parents and community, 57% for the teachers. Active exploration, play, and ingenuity, 36% for the parents and community, 55% for the teachers and staff. The Discovery Academy was 31%, and then 26. And then IB, MYP, or PYP, Primary Years Program, was 26% and 15%. And I wanted to show you, just to remind you, that the active exploration, play, and ingenuity is a play-based, but a real problem-solving approach, inquiry and exploration. And you'll hear that theme quite a bit in all of our magnets, including the ones that we already have, STEAM at Katherine Kolnowski and the arts at Northeast Academy. It might look a little differently. These were some of the ideas that were generated. But I think the really important thing is that the schools that end up having these themes, you're going to be bringing your community together. You're going to be bringing parents together with staff to really engineer exactly what this is going to look like. They all talk about the social, emotional learning, having hands-on exploration, and collaboration with peers. With the environmental marine life science, they really talk about our beautiful location, which is nestled in between the Thames River and the Mystic River, and all the opportunities for partnerships, including the Project Oceanography, UConn Avery Point, New England Science and Sailing. And again, problem-solving, real-life kind of experiences, environmental sustainability, and also looking at healthy living habits too, for children, and conservation. And then the Discovery Academy, nurturing creativity and curiosity, really based on some of the great work from Dr. Ranzilli up at UConn and Dr. Howard Gardner at Harvard, really where we nurture kids' passions and proclivities and help them find what they're really good at and what they love to do. And kind of an enrichment-based program, similar to what we do before and after school, but maybe incorporating some of those things right into the school day. And then the International Baccalaureate, again, inquiry-based interdisciplinary framework. We know about this through our MYP. So this would then expand our district to be an international baccalaureate district, where you would have Primary Years Program at the elementary, MYP at the middle, and then the International Baccalaureate Diploma and Careers Program at the high school. So that's basically it. And I'm going to stop sharing so if you have any questions, you can ask me, and I can see you. Anyone, any questions with the themes? And then I can.
Susan.
I just want to reiterate what I've said in the, the committee meeting, because I was in on this committee, that the IB PYP program is a way of teaching. So it can be incorporated into any of our elementary schools. And so it doesn't have to be a separate entity. As a matter of fact, it shouldn't be. It should be a part of what it is. All right? So I just wanted to make sure that's clear. So when, when I look at that list, I see we have three schools that don't have themes. We have three themes. In my mind, pick one for the schools, and just go from there. And then, you know, if we want to explore putting in PYP, that's another discussion, in my mind.
And that's very similar to what we did with the middle school, remember? The two middle schools, Westside was our STEM magnet school, and Cutler was our Arts and Humanities Magnet. But they both, because of that grant for MSAP Magnet School Assistance through the federal government, we were able to then layer the MYP with that. And when they came together as Groton Middle School, we end up with a STEAM Magnet School that's got the MYP foundation. So you're right, Liz, you bring up some good points.
Dr. Granier?
You're muted.
I was going to say, Liz, that is almost literally word-for-word what I wanted to say, so thank you.
Actually, quite frankly, Liz, um, you answered, you, you answered one of my questions, which is, if we don't pick the PYP, we, would we lose our, our expansive sort of young kid to high school kid IB program? So thank you very much. Rita, I saw that you raised your hand. Sorry.
Yes. When I look at the number of parents, student, and community that took this result, this survey, 398, and only 186 teachers and staff, I think it was done fairly early on. And I would like to see, now that these schools are really a reality, I'd like to see it done again. I mean, you have active play and ingenuity at only 36%. That's less than half for the parents who took this survey. And the discovery is 31%, and only 26% for the, the teachers. I, I just would really like to see this go back out. I don't see why we have to rush into this. I can understand the names for the schools we have to decide on. But the themes seem to be very important, and two and three seem very similar to me. I know they're a little different. I know that. But as, if I was a parent and I was going to try to decide between those two, active exploration, play, and ingenuity, Discovery Academy, nurturing creativity, and curiosity, I, I would like to see another, more, some science. I would like to see another, more, some science, some more technology. I just don't know what this means. So my feeling is I would like to see, I'm not probably going to vote for this at all, and I'd like to see it go back out now that these schools are really a reality.
I think, Rita, I think one of the things, the staff has been in contact with the principals, talking about these different themes. They've had many, many conversations. And our concern is that if, you know, if these end up being embraced by the school community, it's really important that the school community makes meaning of them and really creates what they have to create. And I'm not talking just about the staff and the teachers. I'm also talking about the parents and the communities.
That's why, but there were only 398 of them that even took the survey. And I think now that they're really, these schools are a reality, you'd have a different set of numbers. I think more parents, from what I understand, would take this more seriously than they did.
We can't hear you, Dean.
You're muted.
Sorry about that, yeah, bad habit. Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that. I got something else. But Rita, you bring up a good point. If we go ahead with the zoning, parents who might have thought they were here or there, whatever, might now chime in where they might not have chimed in before, now that they know, they see the schools going up, they have an idea where their kid's going to go. They might have something to say. The question I've got is for Dr. Grenier. You mentioned earlier that I think you said that the racial balancing or imbalance would be at least partially dealt with through the magnet, the intra-district magnet system. And my question would be, I see that there are links to these different themes. For example, Wake County, North Carolina, for the active exploration theme, et cetera. What experience, we've had some experience with intra-district, with designation of intra-district magnet schools. Do you know, do we have enough information that's going to lead us to believe that, at least to be confident, that we're this to be implemented, say? That in fact, we will get enough people moving and choosing, you know, maybe not the school, the district that they're in, but in other districts that we in fact wind up with a racial balance? Or guess?
No, no. Well, first of all, what I tried to say is, on September 1st, when the schools open, they will be racially balanced. We know that just by looking at the demographics. But if you look at a school like Katherine Kolnowski, it's 41% out of district kids go to that school. So we know that's a usually successful magnet. And Northeast has not been operating as a magnet for that long. But what you can do legally, as you probably know, you can't assign children on the basis of race. The US Supreme Court ruled in 2008. But Connecticut has a law that says you have to have schools that are racially balanced. So they have to be racially balanced, but you can't use race as a factor to balance. And so what we've done through LEARN and this grant that we're just part of, Susan and I worked with a scholar and then a demographer on controlled choice. So what we've done in Northeast Academy, you're allowed to set up essentially catchment zones. And you could take two kids from this zone and five kids from that zone. It's not by race, but if you, as you can figure out with neighborhood, you're actually able to achieve pretty successful balancing of socioeconomics, which we think is most important, actually not race. But you end up with racial composition also. So I think, yeah, the county in North Carolina, that's for sure. Our scholar is a guy named Rick Kalenberg. He was instrumental in that, and so was our demographer, Michael Al. So we believe that if we start racially balanced, that with controlled choice, one neighborhood gets to send three kids and the other neighborhood only gets to send one child to a particular school through a lottery process, we'll be able to achieve racial balance and keep it that way without having to, you know, the bane of Groton's existence has been to redrawing these lines. And we don't want to do that ever again.
And I'd just like to add, we have a new software now for registration that we're going to be implementing this year and the lottery process. So it will be very well organized and structured, you know? And I feel very confident that that will be an asset.
Susan?
Jane?
What really excites me about the theme-based schools is that they will be living, like living organisms. The teacher, students, families will take ownership and redesign and make it their own over time. It won't be cast in stone like days of old. And that is exciting.
Well, even the naming committee decided that they wanted to set up a name and that the theme would come kind of afterwards. And similar to Katherine Kolnowski, they didn't start out as a STEAM school. They started out with a lot of other things, but it was really the school community that came together to fine tune that. So are you ready for me to move to the naming committee? We have several members here.
I just, I do, one second, Liz, I will recognize you. But we do have a chat of, Beth is saying that not to move on this tonight would really hinder the process of the staff consolidation and movement. So I just wanted to kind of make sure that that got heard.
I just have a question, Sue. When was the, when did this survey go out? I mean, was this, was the initial survey sent in September? Or was it, did this come from an earlier survey? I don't remember.
Last year in January for the teachers. And then later on, we sent it out to the parents.
So it hasn't been during this time of craziness at the very beginning? This was given to them a while ago when we were still in a normal situation.
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID. All right, so they did have a chance to, they had the opportunity. We are not, there was plenty of opportunity is what I'm asking.
And when you think about the number of elementary teachers and staff, you know, you have almost 200 out of probably 250 elementary teachers. So that's a pretty good size group. And then, you know, the parents too, to have almost 400 parents, elementary parents responding to that, that's also a good percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Grenier? Oh, excuse me, Jay, I'm going to recognize Jay, and then Dr. Grenier.
Yeah, just a quick note, and that is, I was thinking about the percentages that Malone and Brum consider to be valid. And these are much higher. I don't remember their exact thresholds, but I think this represents a very good cross-section of people that actually did respond. And I would hate to then say to this group that just because their results are a few months old, that we're going to throw them out and do it all over again.
I agree.
I think it's still fresh enough, and I think they're still a large enough number. And our teachers have enough to worry about at this point. I think, you know, as Beth said, if they're moving toward staffing these schools, we can't wait until next fall to decide on that.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I was thinking about by December. I was not thinking by next fall. I was thinking by December. And usually, teachers do not put in their transfer until January, February of the following year. So I was not thinking of a long time period.
We're actually talking about trying to move that ahead a little bit so that we'll have some time for the new staffs to get together and to be able to start forming those relationships and having input. So, you know, I think we are looking forward to having that done sooner than later.
Thank you, Susan. Dr. Grenier?
Well, I was just going to say quickly, there's the staffing concern that we've worked with Beth and the GEA on. But there's also the notion that each school is going to have to start to develop, and I'm doing this with the budget. It's going to have to actually develop the theme. And, you know, September gets here, I see Jamie nodding her head. Because Jamie and Steve are going to have to actually operate, and Seth Danner, operate a fully functional lottery-based themed magnet school on September 1st. And we need to have that happen, the lottery needs to happen like in April. So, you know, as I move my way back, I'm not panic-stricken, but I'm concerned that we want to try to get this theme squared away as soon as possible.
Thank you. Susan? If you would move on, please. Oh, Andrea, sorry.
Sorry. I think one of the things that we have to realize is, and somebody said this before, I'm not sure who it was, that the theme will morph into what it's going to be. And that will happen through parent input and teacher input. It's not going to be the same theme in five years. It may be the same theme, but it won't look the same in five years. So I wouldn't, I would put the vote forward.
Thank you. I'm going to move, I'm actually going to, I think we have a good enough sense about where people are. Susan, I'm going to ask that you move.
Okay. So here is a quick little slideshow, really sharing the data from the survey results on the naming. And remember that the survey took place October 15th through the 21st. And we really got information from the staff. We got information from community members, parents, teachers, municipal leaders. And the responses were, this was pretty, you know, for having a one-week survey, talk about results. 688 responses we had. And you can see the breakdown. So we really analyzed it. Parents, there were 423. The staff members, 152. 71 community members, 34 students, a couple grandparents. And what we did, the survey I had shared with you, we broke it down to the names, the first original names that the committee had really selected. We added to the committee, as I said, Jim Streeter and three of the board members, along with the original membership was invited. And so you can see that when 603 of the 688 who completed the survey selected at least one of the names from the list. So they were allowed to check off the names that they preferred in the list. So almost all of them checked off at least one of the names on the list. And Mystic River Academy and Thames River Academy came out to be the top choices in that part of the survey. You know, we did a deeper dive. 25 people wrote in variations from Avery Point. And then 16 had variations on the Thames River component name. We had approximately half of the survey participants suggest additional names. And I'll share, we have a few pages of that. They were more one-offs, but I thought it was really interesting and very creative, some of the work or some of the names that our constituents had. About 35 of the 688 said they felt that it should honor a historical figure or community leader. But even in that, that wasn't a whole lot of suggested names of people. 25 out of the 688 commented to keep the existing names of Cutler and Westside. So there were some people who thought that would be a good idea. 14 mentioned some part of the Groton's naval history or the submarine force. 12 of the people who responded also suggested other area institutions or businesses. And 10 made a comment about that we should unify the community. And I think that's one of the things that the Board of Ed really spoke about, that they wanted to see this more of a unified experience and that we needed to avoid names that link to specific neighborhoods. They even talked about things that might be presumptuous. They didn't like the academy name. They, you know, several of them really spoke out about that. And I think three people spoke out about Mystic being presumptuous. So we just kept digging in the data. Lambo Latham Academy came up, and he was, you know, quite a figurehead back, I think, Civil War days. Jim, was that, do you remember?
Revolutionary War.
Okay, Revolutionary War. And then, you know, they talked about east, southwest, like we have a Northeast Academy. Did we want to name them? And I've been in a community in New Canaan where they named them after the parts of town. So that was a recommendation. And then these are pages, and we can put this out for people to see, but, you know. But I really wanted to kind of let the board members who served on this committee, and Jim Streeter, really speak to our discussion and what they felt was important. And we kind of went back after we looked at, you know, a lot of this data. We went back to this frame, which really kind of indicated preference for the ones that we had suggested or recommended. So is there, the board members who served on this committee, would you like to speak?
I would like to have. I would like to have Jim Streeter speak, recognize him, because one of the names, rather than using academy, I believe Jim came up with Mystic Magnet, Mystic River Magnet School, and then the Mystic River Magnet School also, as opposed to using academy. So I'd like Jim to say his feelings about that. Maybe we don't have to share anymore. I mean, yeah.
That's a good idea. Let's not share anymore.
Oh, Jim?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. I also appreciate the opportunity to serve on the committee. This is the third school renaming committee I've served on, the Katherine Kolnowski Magnet School and the Groton Middle School. And this committee was very conscientious and very thoughtful as far as going through the names that were provided and suggested. I was very pleased with the number of participants in the survey. I was shocked, to be honest with you, in a one-week survey, how many people responded. But I was asked to join the committee to look at it from a historical standpoint. And I kind of laid on or took into consideration my previous venture with the middle school, where we're trying to unify our community. And I've always felt that Groton is a great community, even though we're diverse as far as the number of fire districts we have, we are all one. So looking at it from a historical perspective, I thought the Thames River and the Mystic Rivers, if you coupled them together, it was sort of like a common denominator of Groton's really, really rich maritime history. And it made the school names more unifying because you're still going to have geographically a distance between the two schools. But they would be similar to each other by having the river theme. And if we look back as far as historically, the Mystic River and the Thames River, the commonality is you've got the shipbuilding aspect, where you've got cargo ships and submarines and sailing ships and fishing crafts and pleasure boats, et cetera. And then, of course, we had the fishing theme, which whaling and Manhattan businesses and lobstering, sailing. Of course, you know, we've got the sailing ships on both rivers and the pleasure crafts. And then the lighthouses, which was one of the suggestions. We had a lot of people suggested lighthouses as well. If you look at, you know, go down each river, you've got Morgan Point and Avery Point and London ledge and Lauter Reef. So I thought that was a kind of a unifying way to name the schools is to have the river themes. And then, of course, we kind of ranted around the academy, naming it an academy or naming it an elementary school. And my personal thoughts, I thought Magnet School provided a very strong and positive implication to the school's name itself. And it also, and I'm not looking at it like the school board looks at it. It would actually present a school within a school, all right, by having a magnet theme. So that was my look on it. And I was pleased that most of the committee, if not the majority of them, kind of backed off and they gave thought to it and said, geez, that does sound like a good idea. kind of backed off and they gave thought to it and said, geez, that does sound like a good idea. As far as providing your detailed theme, that's up to the Board of Education, the students, or the parents and the teachers to get involved. But I thought for the interim, that the names of the Mystic River Magnet School and the Thames River Magnet School would be appropriate.
Thank you, Jim.
May I ask a question?
I'm going to recognize Lee and then Liz.
I've never asked you this, and maybe you can tell me. Why is it that we are the only people in the world that call it Thames? And as opposed to Thames? And I just wonder, when people move here and they see Thames, where did it start being called Thames as opposed to Thames?
Well, Lee, it's like Groton. And I've been to all seven Grotons in the United States and the one in England. And England.
I am going to try to keep us to the naming committee, but I.
Well, that makes a difference to me, but okay, I give up.
Okay.
Jim is actually going to be publishing a two-part series in the Groton Times on the naming of schools, so we're really excited about that. And has done a historical approach on all of the names of our schools from going back, you know, many, many years. So we'll look forward to reading more about that.
Great.
Liz?
I just wanted to explain a reason why I actually changed my mind. Because I was very, I was very much against the Mystic River and Thames River because I was thinking definitely that it was going to be very divisive. But when Jim recommended that we add the Magnet idea or the term Magnet School, that actually made sense to me. It clicked because a magnet means we're bringing everybody together. And Jamie pointed out that, you know, she gets kids from two different, totally different regions and that the kids meld, they mesh together. And that's what we were focusing on. And that was my concern, was creating a unified, you know, a unifying situation. So when you put the word Magnet in there, that just denotes that it is a unified, we're welcoming people from all over the district. So I just wanted to explain that that's why I shifted my vote. Because I heard very loud and clear that Mystic was one side of the town and, you know, the Thames was the other side. But it was, excuse me, Lee, I'm explaining. But, so I wanted to explain to you why I changed my, explain what the theme, how that would help with our unifying of our district.
Thank you, Liz. Andrea?
I was on that committee as well. And one of the reasons that I wanted to be on it was that I was so adamantly opposed to any further divisiveness within the town. But then I heard Kathy Minor talking about how the themes of the Magnet Schools were really what was going to bring, those themes were going to bring the community together. And that in time, that we would forget about whether this was a Mystic side or a Groton City side. And the other thing was, I think it was Seth Danner who said that, no, it was Steve Wheeler who talked about how our town is nestled between the two rivers. And, you know, when I heard that combined with what Kathy Minor said, I realized that it was really an embracing of the entire town. And it just made all the difference in the world to me. And that's when I realized it was not divisive, it was going to bring us together.
Thank you, Andrea. I think actually you guys have really, I was part of that group of not wanting the Mystic and the Thames River because of the divisiveness. And Jim, thank you for kind of coming in and kind of helping us kind of see that more of a historical, and then also understanding the concept of the Magnet theme. So Kathy, once again, thank you for your leadership as always. So is there any other question about that? I want us to stay on this if we need to, but I am looking at the time and it's about 7:20?
The only other thing that I forgot to say, if you look at the number of parents that chose, it's overwhelming. So we have a community as well. That's it.
Thank you. So Susan, you continue to be on.
I know, I'm ready.
All righty.
Here we go. So just a big shout out to our communications director, Rebecca Bayes, who helped me so much with disaggregating all of this data. It was a tremendous, tremendous job. And I had shared with you the kind of preliminary results, but we were not at the end of the survey. So it was really important that we were able to realize the full amount of results. One of the things that is different in this count is that we were able to disaggregate. So if I was a parent with four children, like I am, it would not share just the data from the firstborn. It would share the data from all the children. So we really had to do a deep dive to get to this. So the charts are a little different than what you first saw because we made sure that every child was accounted for. So there were 591, here's another one. Like our parents and teachers have really come forward to help us with these surveys. 591 unique participants representing their 864 students. So that's really impressive. And 328 educator participants, and that's a shout out to our teachers. They really wanted to have their voice heard. So I think that's important. So when we look at a parent, now I'm going to show you slides because what I've done is I've brought these together and I've tried to assemble them. And Rebecca has helped me with this, assemble them so you can see the parent's perspective and the teacher's educator's perspective. So here we identified, the parents identified the number of children that were, of their children participating in hybrid, which was 715, 715, and 148 who were full distance. So kind of keep that in mind. You know, at first it was like, we were seeing numbers like 20%, 25%. So kind of in between. And then again, you know, who are these children? Where are they in our district? So you see overwhelmingly, we had a lot of preschool, pre-K parents respond, 253. Some didn't provide the information, that's in the orange. We had many young elementary school children, which is really pre-K, K, and 2. So over half of our responses came from our youngest, from the parents of our youngest learners. And then we have 219 responses from middle school and 168 responses from the high school. Again, the parent's perspective, is your child able to understand the instruction? We thought this was really important. Are they able to really understand what's expected of them in receiving remote learning? So this is really specifically around the remote learning. Now remember, if you're a hybrid student, that means you're face-to-face for two days, but you're remote for three. If you're an all-remote, you're remote for five days in the week. So everybody's remote a little bit, or, you know, part of the time. And so when you look at this data from the blue, where children only need help sometimes, and the orange, where they can complete most of their work with little or no help. So that's your blue and your golden rod. This is the kids who really need, require help to get their work done. And then the green is, my child always requires my help. So it's really a mixed bag. I think more often than not, you know, not quite, probably two-thirds really are showing that most of the time, they can do it on their own with a little bit of help. And then again, talking about engagement, is your child engaged in their learning, either for hybrid or for distance learning? And overwhelmingly, they're saying yes, in the blue, that they are. In the red, it's somewhat engaged. Other was really a combination, yes, they are, but this is happening or that is happening, so that they were really trying to juggle it. And then the golden rod is the slim piece of the pie of students who aren't engaged. Here we have the educator's perspective, and we broke it out for the educators, hybrid versus full distance, because we really wanted to see from an educator's perspective if they were noticing a difference from those kids who are coming in for part of the week versus the kids who are fully at home. And you can see the difference in the results from moderately engaged, which is the red, and highly engaged, which is the blue. You know, you see many more children in the hybrid learning model who are more engaged than in the full distance learning. Especially if you look at the golden rod, which is rarely engaged, 14% in the hybrid and 27% in full distance. And then the green sliver of not engaged at all, you don't see any teacher reflecting that the hybrid learners are not engaged at all. They're engaged some of the time. Another perspective for student engagement, how many students are completing their assignments? Because now attendance isn't only, are you there remotely? Are you there in person? But are you getting your work done as well? So that's an important feature. So most of the students are completing their work, that's in the blue. About half of the students are completing their work in the red. And then only a few are completing. And nobody says that none of them are, you know, not completing their work. I have a slide that's going to come up for the teachers next, but I just wanted to tell you that we asked some of the same things of parents and teachers. And you'll see the shape of the data is very similar. So both parents and teachers fully agree that having a consistent schedule for kids is of utmost importance. They also believe that a blended learning model with live Zoom lessons and independent practice and pre-recorded lessons is the way to go. And you'll see that also on the teacher's slide. Live lessons is a way to engage kids, and that comes out with 424 responses. There was a lot of talk, even in the comments, about making sure that our written instructions were clear and concise and giving kids more than just the written response, but maybe even by meeting with kids, talking to kids about the assignments and ways to connect so that they would understand. And then, of course, pre-recorded and interactive and collaboration with peers. I was interested because the collaboration with peers, I thought, would be even higher than that from the parent and the teacher's perspective. So you notice the shape of the data, looking at the educator's perspective, is very similar. We have added the in-person instruction because the teachers are there and present with their kids, so they can notice how that's going. But then the schedule comes up again, to have that consistent schedule, the live lessons comes up, that step-by-step written directions. So, and again, collaboration with peers is something that I thought would be definitely more positive for engagement. Going back to parents on Wednesdays, because Wednesday was something that honestly, we really dug through all the Wednesday data. And it's quite controversial because some people say it's not enough work. Some people say there's too much work. But Wednesday is really something that we're looking into to see if we can make some growth with Wednesdays. Has your child used Wednesday for extra help and teacher communication? And as you see, the, that the red is yes and the blue is no. So not everybody's taking advantage of that. So that's something we need to consider. And then from the educator's perspective, how many students have reached out for the office hours and have attended the, you know, to the work? So you've got many of the students reaching out in the blue. In the red, about half. And only a few is the golden rod, and none is the green. And then some are saying it's not applicable. So that's something that we definitely want to do a deeper dive on. And I can show you some of the comments, too. So it was important to us that we really get a flavor for the comments. So a lot of things were repeated over and over again, but this is kind of the essence of what parents were saying. So in this one case, Fitch High School teachers are carefully planning the lessons and objectives to meet the curricular goals, very positive, frequent live lessons. So from this parent's perspective, they're feeling that there's the right pacing of work, the right rigor, it's been chunked out, and there's timely feedback for students. The next comment says, there needs to be a new, there needs to be new instruction, learning opportunities, and independent work provided by teachers on Wednesdays. And if they're all caught up, then sometimes they don't have a whole lot to do, except for maybe some independent reading. So that's another parent's, you know, perspective. This year is going so much better than last year. We did hear that over and over again, you know, from the spring when we first did remote learning. I've heard a lot about more communication, needing more communication with teachers and more notice regarding the in-person one-to-one help. So communication, I think, is always something that we're trying to improve. And then, you know, one of the things that this particular parent appreciates is working, that works well for their child, is having a set schedule that is same-day-to-day, whether he's in school or home. And the schedule has made this year a lot easier from the spring. And it would be very helpful to have a week's worth of work, ready to go, and kind of showcased in advance. Again, more one-to-one check-in, being able to communicate with friends and peers. Thank you to your team for doing the best that you can during this pandemic. So there was some great appreciation from many parents that they're trying to do the best they can and they feel teachers are trying to do the best they can. But this is not like anything that we've ever done before. So again, teachers are doing the best they can. We're trying to do the best and, you know, trying to differentiate so that it works for all kids. Now, these are the educators, and some of the same things that you've heard from parents, you hear from educators, from kids are happy to be back, they're wearing their masks, you know, we're trying to do everything to safeguard. We're trying to provide family support, but it's not always easy. It can be a challenge. The biggest challenge is getting them to complete all their work. So I know that that's been a real issue, to make sure that kids know what the expectations are and that they are able to follow through and they have the support they need to do it. We've heard this over and over again, what a heavy lift hybrid is as far as prepping for both hybrid and distance. Mike spoke about that. So we do want to listen carefully to try to identify some of these problems and to provide the support teachers need. And then, you know, we've heard this before, too, that because the LMS is all in written form, that kids who have problems with reading have a hard time navigating that. So even finding new ways of getting that information out beyond the LMS. And then, you know, here's, the teaching is different, it's not easy. It's new learning. It's new learning for parents, it's new learning for teachers, it's new learning for students. We're all novices, like Mike had said. And, you know, planning for those in front of me and those at home, you know, sometimes it feels like three preps. They really have commented that the Wednesday schedule with, which the expectation is really to do, you know, some connective kind of Zoom lesson, pre-recorded lessons, you know, and have work available for kids to do, have office hours so that you can have communications. But then it's a planning and collaboration time, even for, you know, Even for, you know, personalized PD for teachers so that they can keep up with all of this. So there's fear about the widening gap. I've been in many conversations with the State Department. And we're getting ready to do even more assessments now to check in on that and. You know, I felt like this was a pretty comprehensive report. And it was a lot of work looking through all the data and the comments to really get a gist of what people were saying. And I'm going to stop sharing so I can see everybody. So thank you to Rebecca for all her help with this. The principals have the information too, so that they'll be able to really study some of these comments from both educators and parents. And be able to really identify some problems and solve it collaboratively.
Questions from the board?
Just want to say thank you. There's been such work put into this.
I think it's important work, Jane. I think that we have to keep listening. And as we we go through, I think I shared the story about that mug I found with Big Apple that said. Progress over perfection. And this certainly isn't perfect by any means. But we do want to see progress and sustainability and it's going to take all of us working together for that.
Rebecca, thank you so much for your efforts and. And doing that as well.
Thank you, Susan.
Are you waving or do you have a question?
Actually, both. I'm just want to, it's not a question, it's a statement. Well, how do you get that many people as to respond in such a short period of time? I'm stunned having done research in the past and very impressed.
I am too. It's our community. It says something about our community. And parents and community members. It really says something about them.
Yes, it does. And about your organizing it too. I have to say that. So.
Thank you.
It's hard.
It's not easy. We heard, we've heard it over and over. So, but you can't solve a problem without identifying it. That's the biggest. That's the biggest success of problem solving is you've really got to get down in the weeds to figure out. What's really going on and what can we do to help? So Mike and I are going over to Groton Middle School tomorrow and we're going to listen and that needs to happen. So we can really figure this out.
And that's how it happens.
Rita?
Yes, Susan, would you come back to the board in a couple of months and tell us if we're still in the hybrid plan? And share with us what some of the solutions are that the principals and maybe the teachers have come up with. When they identify the problems.
I would be delighted, especially if in a couple of months, we're still able to be in the hybrid. So.
If I'm not hearing any more questions, I'm going to move us on to the business manager report. Mr. Knight, are you here?
I am here. So I'm not going to share the exhibits unless you want me to.
We've all gotten them.
Yeah, that's what you've said in the past. So, so the object code summary, which is attachment number three. Shows that we are currently have a projected unexpendited balance of just under $25,000, 24,467. We're four months in. Many lines are still at budget, but we feel very confident that. That in our salaries and benefits line, which which represents 77% of the budget, that we are on track and. On track with the plan and the remainder of the expenses we continue to track and we feel confident there as well. That that we should hit our budget.
Are there any questions about the object code? Dean?
Yeah, what do you typically find are the. Sort of the known surprises, if you will, as you move through a school year?
One of our biggest one is out of district tuitions, which have not yet hit for the most part. You know, it depends on how many students go out of district. How many special education students are placed in out of district. So those are, you know, we anticipate. That to be a certain number in the budget, but those come in. You know, that that becomes known hopefully over the next couple of months. Now that the PISs numbers are set. We should start to get in some of our tuition bills and we should have a better idea of that over the next couple of months.
All right, thank you.
The health report. Any other questions about that? Okay, then the health report.
So the health insurance report, which is attachment number four. So this is through August of 2020. And for the month of August, we were at 83 and a half percent of budget. So it appears we're still seeing an impact against what we had originally budgeted of the of the pandemic. We are told by our healthcare consultants that we should anticipate. That all the postponed visits and procedures will will come in at some point, but. We're still, we're still waiting, you know, as, as you know, the latter quarter. Of last year, the health insurance claims were much lower than what we had budgeted. They continue to be low, but it looks like they're starting to catch up bit. It was at 45% for July, 83 and a half percent for August. I would anticipate that to 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 continue to increase, but I would hope we could still stay within budget for the year.
Any questions about the health insurance report? You always get so many questions, Ken.
I know, I know. I love it.
And then your last one, sir.
Attachment number five, this is the pandemic-related funding that that we are, have been allocated to us. There are two pieces to this. There is the Corona Relief Fund, the CRF, and this is for expenditures through December 30th of 2020. The amount that was allocated to us by Connecticut was 1,227,291. Susan and Lori and I have have come up with a plan on how to allocate and use these funds. The academic personnel, which is the largest group, is to cover the substitute teachers that we have in place. Some the paraprofessionals that are helping us maintain the social distancing and the and help with the. Distance learning. And then there's additional staffing that we needed for the for the remote learning that Dr. Grenier had alluded to before. And then all of the curriculum planning and development that that the that the teachers did over the summer and continue to do. All those costs will be covered by this, by the CRF. Amount here. And then for the student support, we are, we do have an additional two social workers that we're going to have to help assist the students. And staff to reach out and make sure everyone is getting supported the way they should. We've hired additional custodial staff at each of the schools. So that will pay for that cost as well. And then. There was an allocation for cleaning and safety supplies, desk shields, hand sanitizer, masks and gowns and gloves. All of these, all of these things that we have purchased and gotten in place will be paid for through this this Corona Relief Fund. And so those are all expenses that are going to get paid through December 30th of this year. The the CARES Act, which is from the the Federal CARES Act. Was an additional $664,000 that that was allocated to Groton. And once again, it's going to help pay for additional teachers, substitute teachers. Staff that we need for the remote learning. For the additional social workers that 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 we we have hired as well as the additional custodial staff. And the horizon for this one is longer. It goes out till September 30th of 22. So this will kick in after the CRF has been expended.
Questions about the budget? Dean?
Yeah, thanks for that. I was just thinking as I was, I'm just trying to get up to speed with all this stuff as you're going through this.
Dean, you've had a week.
I know, I know. But although this arrived on Friday, I'd say, but any event. So these expenditures, this, this, these revenues and these expenditures, do they relate at all to attachment three? Or are these sort of like a parallel?
Well, so yeah, it's kind of parallel. These costs are additional costs that we have incurred due to the pandemic.
Right.
It's additional teachers, additional substitutes that we needed in order to, in order to do the hybrid, hybrid learning plan that we're currently in.
So this is, well, off-budget in a way and.
Yeah, it's off-budget. It's additional, the first, first. The the CARES Act is that federal grant that was done last, last April in the. In the Corona Relief Fund is state money in recognition of all the. The additional costs and PPE and all that sort of stuff that we're going through.
Right. What I'm, what I'm thinking of is this, and I don't want to belabor the point. Coming from the outside. There's, you can never satisfy everybody, but there's always a lot of chatter in some quarters about transparency or lack of transparency in the board of that budget. Is everything reported? How granular is it, etc.? And so I'm thinking, wow, if somebody wanted to be a conspiracy theorist, they'd say, well, here's their budget and here's unreported expenses, you know. So I was just curious as to how often this happens. I guess not very often. We don't have that many viruses. But and it would be, it would be a trick to fold this into, you know, your already laid out budget.
Let me explain. If if we didn't have these funds, we would have, we would be in hundreds of thousands of dollars deficit right now.
That I understand. That I understand. I'm looking at it. I'm talking simply from a reporting point of view.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could, we'll lay it out. You know, what Ken and I are trying to do is. Just make sure at the end of the rainbow, we don't have a deficit.
All right.
That's sort of our big.
Dean, that's the reason why it's in a budget form. We're not just throwing out a number and saying we bought some stuff. Is that we actually, that we've actually taken, this is how much money that we've received and these are the things that we're spending on. So I actually think that we're being more transparent than. Than than not.
Oh, I understand. I understand how this works. I'm just saying. There will be people who will, who could make something of this. It's just, you know, in terms of how the data is presented.
Absolutely. Anything else? Hearing none? Mr. Kilpatrick? And I'll make sure we have time for you, sir.
My thank you. Good evening. So I got three things to report on and I believe Dr. Grenier is going to join me on the second item. But the first thing is the relocation of the portable buildings from West Side and Cutler. They have been delivered to the. Central office site. They've been placed on the slabs. They've been blocked up. The company that is doing that. Setting those needs to come back and do another set of blocks to make sure that they're secure. And then we will be tying them down to the slabs. My, my department will tie them down to the slabs. Waiting for EverSource to get here to set a pole for electricity and then will be. My department again will do the trenching and hook up the electricity so that we can use those buildings. Pretty much all the space is already spoken for, as I said before. It adds up to about half the amount of square footage that we had at the wood frame building at Pleasant Valley. But it's certainly appreciated and the guys are going to be working hard to get those in place and operational here very shortly. The second item is the Alliance District Funding. And the item that I had the most to do with on that list is the last page, I believe, or second to the last page. The last page, which is the Charles Barnham Elementary School Project. A couple of years ago, the. School, the permanent school building committee had a CIP project. Where we had a study of the facilities at Charles Barnham and Mary Morrison Schools. And in that study, there were many recommendations regarding those two schools for upgrades as needed in the future. One of the very important things at Charles Barnham School, because we're going to be keeping that school, was to upgrade the fire alarm system. And so because the alarm system, it doesn't have us. The sounds or the lights that are necessary in today's world to meet the code today. While it was grandfathered in the way it is, this will improve that and give the kids and staff notice that. The fire alarm system has been activated. So that's our Charles Barnham project that we put in here. We've got about $5,000 in professional services. In other words, the architect would have to design this. And then materials and labor, about $90,000 to do that alarm system at Charles Barnham School. Any questions on that one? Okay, the second item is the.
You want me to finish the other one, Sam?
Yeah, and I'll chime in if you need any assistance with it. That'd be fine.
So.
Did this go through the finance? Jay, did this? Okay.
Yeah, it's been a little, little bit unusual. The, the state of Connecticut allocated. And then actually went to the legislature, allocated $30 million to Alliance Districts and they divvied the money up to each of the districts and. And Groton received a little bit more than $477,000. We, we were told that we had until Friday. To get this to the state and so Ken Knight, thankfully. Whipped over to the post office and got a post, got it postmarked by then. I need to get the minutes of this meeting into the State. Department of Administrative Services by tomorrow or else they won't give us the money. So anyway, here's, here's how we're spending 477,000. The first two are for access control, one at. Catherine Kornowski and one at Northeast Academy. It's, it's the swipe badge thing. The company is out of business. The old company is out of business and we can't repair it anymore. So this is for a new, a new system. It's the current one we we have. The second thing is there's, there's pre-work that needs to be done in terms of wiring. As many of you know, the phone system in the central office is is pretty bad, very bad. So this is going to allow us to, $236,000 is going to be the foundation for the wiring. For a voice over IP system district-wide. So the middle school has it. The two newer schools that we're building, of course, they will have brand new. This will, this will give us the ability to have. Voice over Internet protocol, voice over IP, just district-wide. We've also putting some wiring, network wiring into Charles Barnham. And the, and the, the central office and network wiring for, for the high school. This is, this is all, you know, sort of back room stuff that Dennis Colclaw. We, we, we thought these were important things that could really help our district and and use the. It had to be, of course, on a building, on a building project. And we thought this would go a long way to helping us. And it's a one-time deal and if you don't spend it. You have to give the money back. And so we, we, we put all these programs together. Just, just to be sure, we're not going to leave any money on the table.
Any questions about that? Or Jay, do you have any comments from the finance committee?
Well, some of this got flushed in after the meeting, but so my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Grenier. So the Connecticut Education Network comes into the central office. So we're talking about wiring. It's not like the central office itself. Necessarily needs this wiring, but it's, it's feeding all of the schools, the, the signal from CEN. To upgrade their. Their internet connectivity.
Correct.
Dean?
Thank you. The, the, moving to cloud-based voice over internet unified system. A lot of people switch, I'm trying to make an analogy, or a lot of people switch from, you know, a landline to this sort of system privately or even commercially. Is there against this expense, is there an anticipated long-term, long-term savings of any sort? Well, going from one expense to. Will we be going from one expense to, one operating expense to a different operating expense, but more or less the same?
I think the only answer I'd have to get Dennis to, maybe, maybe Ken can weigh in. But I know when we were thinking about replacing the landlines, it was going to be millions and millions of dollars. And I think this is far more efficient, you know, by a factor of many.
Yeah, I think we should anticipate expenses for phone expense to not go up or down going forward after this. I think what this does is it solidifies our, our network so that we can continue pretty much, I think, along the same, same expenses.
Thank you.
And I can say that I've tried to make calls to the Central Office, and 50% of the time, they do not connect. So it's really a safety issue, I think, if the Central Office is unable to contact or be contacted by the buildings.
I could chime in quickly on that, too, Jay. A lot of times, when you're calling from the outside to the Central Office, it takes quite a while before it actually makes the connection. And then what you'll find, when it does make the connection, that the line is actually busy, and that's apparently why it took so long to make that connection. So a lot of people outsiders that are trying to call the Central Office don't realize that it's, that it will make the connection, but it takes quite a while to do it. A little buzz once you get it sometimes, too, so.
Yeah. Rita?
I believe this is a question more for Sam. Has the phone issues at Northeast Academy been resolved?
You're muted, Sam.
Sam?
You're muted.
You need to unmute. Okay, now I've got it. So we had Verizon come into Northeast Academy to put boosters in about five different spots in that building. And it did improve it, but it hasn't taken care of all the problems. We've had them come back a couple more times. And they're going to come back and add some more boosters. But again, it's like the new middle school. Even the new middle school has some dead spots in it. When you build these buildings with this much steel in them, there are places that won't get reception. So we're working on that, both at Northeast, Catherine Kolnasky, and the new middle school.
I know when you're closer to the water also, there's an issue. But in this part of town, actually AT&amp;T works better than Verizon, and we've had to switch. So I don't know if that's something you want to look into, because it is very difficult at Northeast Academy for their phone system. It's, it's been like that for, you know, what is it, 10 or 11 years now? So just a thought. I just saw that we had all this funding. I thought maybe we could jump in, direct some of it there. Thank you.
Any other questions about that? And if not, let's move to the CIP. So Dr. Grenier, Sam, you're back to being muted again.
Right. Just pulling up my sheets here and taking a look at that. And the first item is the Groton Middle School Athletic Complex. And we've applied for $825,000 for lighting project on the new athletic field, the artificial turf field and on the softball field. So it's about $500,000 for the synthetic field and about $325,000 for the softball field. So that's the first item that we've asked for. The second item is Northeast Academy Indoor Air Quality Project. You remember that we had Fussin O'Neill Engineering come in and do a study for us on that building. They checked into the HVAC system and also into the grounds around the building, because we had a high humidity issue there. While we've instituted an active dehumidification process there in the building, it has pretty much remedied the, mitigated the high humidity issues in the building. But the grounds are still extremely wet, and I don't think we can say that it may not be a problem again. And so we've, the second item that Fussin O'Neill recommended was to do some grading and drainage around the building. And so we've asked for $430,000 in the short-term upgrades of doing some grading and drainage around that building.
Excuse me, Sam?
Yes.
I, I thought we only, I thought we, we said only the drainage for 215, and we moved the other item to next year.
Yeah, I'm looking at.
I think, I think there's a mistake here. I thought.
I think that's, I think you're right. I think that's a typo. We asked for 215 in that, and we were going to ask for the 200 next year so that we can continue to study the HVAC system and make, and make sure that that is continuing to mitigate the problem, so.
So line D, if you've got your sheet there, line D is an error. And therefore, the total on the bottom there should be 215.
Right.
There were two projects.
Year 22 should be just the 215 in construction, and the total should be 215.
That's right.
The Fitch High School Athletic Facilities, we pushed off to 2023. And the next item on the list is Charles Barnum Elementary School. And because we are keeping the Charles Barnum School, the roof at Charles Barnum School is beyond its life expectancy of 20 years. And so we've applied for $900,000 to put a new roof on Charles Barnum School. I don't have page numbers on mine, but.
The last one.
That is the last one, Rita?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I have, is the last one. I have a question. Sam, is the roof at Charles Barnum reimbursed by the state 80%?
Not 80%, no. It's, it's our regular rate, which also, that also changes each year, but it's always been in the 50% range. Sometimes, I think some things come in at about 46%, and I've seen things come in at about 52%. So I said, it's generally in the 50% range for Groton, for reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you.
Jay? And then Dean? But Jay first, please?
One of the things we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting was, for many years, we've had re-crowning the football field on the CIP list. And I realized that there's only, you know, so much money, but I didn't want that to be lost on the radar. And furthermore, the refurbishing of the fieldhouse and the track. Once again, I'm also working with the Town Council's Athletic Fields Task Force, and they're coming up with a townwide plan. But I don't want these individual projects to be lost in the shuffle in the event that that plan isn't adopted by the Town Council. So I'm just concerned that, you know, the football field was on there for like six years, and now it's gone, that everybody will think, well, that's fine again. And there's been concerns about the fieldhouse for a long time.
Dean?
Thank you. A couple of questions. The Groton Middle School Athletic Complex. I'm trying to think, this may be something I should have been able to divine, but I know a lot of people will ask this question. So this is a brand-new school, brand-new grounds. I'm sure someone's going to say, well, Jeebers, why wasn't this in the original project? In other words, we're used to seeing CIPs for repairs and additions and things like that. But people are seeing the middle school as brand-new soup-to-nuts project. What's this then? So is this something that might have been cut out originally when we went to bonding? Or is this an afterthought, or an improvement, or what is it?
This, this would be an improvement over what, what was requested and approved from the beginning. So lighting those fields, there is a list of items that the school base, the permanent school-based health center, the Permanent School Building Committee has extras, extra things that we may want to do at the end of the project, should there be funding left. And this is actually on that list as well. So we just, we want to make sure that it's in there somewhere, because this would really make those fields valued three times what they are presently. I mean, you could get three games a night on those fields at certain times of the year, so. Lighting of those fields would be a great improvement for, not only for the school, but for Parks and Rec and for all the other programs that go on throughout town.
Yeah, I mentioned this because I have seen in the past in other districts, sort of a wish list proposal to the town folk, and then a whittling down of the project, and then as the project moves along, actually becomes to fruition, the things that were cut out in the original bond request were sort of, you know, added back in. And some people feel, well, boy, I wish they'd asked me this before, you know? So we sort of voted on the bond thing, and then we're going to, you know, quote, sneak in capital projects on the back end on a brand-new project. But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, the Groton Middle School project actually has come in under budget at this point. So there is going to be some funding left over, and this may well be one of the items that they go back to. Kristi, I hope, is shaking her head yes there as a member of that committee. That would go back to the Town Council, and I guess first, they would have to ask Bond Council if this would be an appropriate expense on the bond itself. And then if that were true, then they may ask the Town Council to fund it through that.
The second, it's not so much a question, it's a comment. My, I have one kid who's in marching band, so that's how I get down to the football field. And I've learned that, I know we have natural turf, and I love natural turf, but I didn't realize this is what happened. Apparently, Fitch could host the types of events, regional events that other high schools could do host. And there's some revenue from that, either from concessions or some fees or whatever. But we can't, because people don't like sitting instruments down on natural turf. So it's just more of a comment. I don't know whether anybody's actually explored putting down artificial turf. And one of the benefits being, being able to host events, maybe like these regional marching band events that we can't host now, because people refuse to come to a natural turf field.
I think that's one of the items that Jay's committee, or that townwide committee has taken a look at, too, is turfing the football field at the high school.
Okay. I do have one other question. It pertains to the relocation of the portable classrooms. I, I didn't, I didn't hear a space to make a comment or ask a question on that one, Kim, so I leave that to you. When, when can I ask?
Do, why don't you do that now?
Okay.
We can move on.
Right. So we're talking about moving the, moving the portables to the Central Office and hooking them up, et cetera. And the space is needed, the space is spoken for. So I'm projecting out. I'm not even going to ask what the space is being used for, but if the, are we going to get in a situation where we have a long-term use of the space? And at some point, there'll be a request to build out permanent space on the Central Office to replace the old rotting, you know, portables.
Not in my lifetime.
What's that? Not in your lifetime? Okay.
No, it's all, it's, it's all going to be used as storage. We, with the closing of Pleasant Valley and that property being placed up for sale by the town, we lost 10,000 square feet of storage space over there that we need to clean out so that the town can dispose of that property. And so we will be culling a lot of things as we move stuff from the Pleasant Valley site to the Central Office. And that's why I say that the space is all pretty much spoken for.
Okay, so long-term, we won't need these, or won't need as many, as much of that space, or? In other words, we're not, we're not moving offices into these things, and at some point, we're going to see a double the size of the Central Office or something.
No, I don't foresee that. They're not going to be used as office space. They're not being built that way. That would be a fire marshal issue, too, so.
All right, thank you.
So you guys, we have a lot more left on the agenda. The good news is most of them are motions that we have already talked about at the front end of this meeting. So I know that we usually don't go past eight o'clock, but, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that they have their voice, that they can say what they want to say, but just to, to know that it looks daunting, what we have left. But in quite, and the reality is, is that we've done a lot of that conversation beforehand in terms of the motion. So with that said, I'm going to move us forward and talk about our committee reports. And that would be policy, curriculum, and finance and facilities. And Lee, you are muted.
Yes, I know. Now I'm not. Yes, we met policy, and we are going to have a second reading of P4118.237, face mask, and we will do that very shortly. We meet again on Monday for our regular meeting.
Thank you, Lee, for you guys working so hard. Curriculum. Andrea?
We're still looking at cursive and penmanship, and cursive without tears, as a matter of fact. And we're looking at it particularly, we had questions arise about what happens in grade two. And we're going to be exploring that, and we also have, still have concerns about one card, one community, so we're still looking at that.
Finance and facilities.
So we met on October 6th. We talked about how the budget process is already in process. Dr. Grenier has met with principals about their site budgets, extensive discussions about the CIPs we just covered. Discussion that solar panels is now in the, solar panels for Groton Middle School is now in the, the hands of the town to come up with a power sharing agreement with a solar panel company. We discussed the Alliance Building Funds we're going to vote on tonight. We discussed relocation of the middle school memorials, the portables, and we received the update that the middle school gym floor, and I believe that has now been completed and been turned over to the school.
Thank you. Negotiations, we're not, we're not there. We're not doing anything at the present moment. Rita, Learn?
Yes, Learn, we, we met, and I have also met with the Executive Committee. But there were two things that I spoke to Dr. Grenier about that I thought were very important, that Learn is going to start for all the districts, the Learn districts. One is a teacher residency program where Learn will be investigating and expanding. It's a systemic program to diversified certified teaching ranks across the Learn region, meaning that paraprofessionals would be able to receive their teaching certificate. So it's a way to grow our own and help people along the way. The second one is that Dr. Lee Title and Learn is offering a Leadership Practice Network for the superintendents in southeastern Connecticut. And it's called Leading and Learning About Race, Racism, and Equity. And I had asked Dr. Grenier, he said we were definitely going to be signing up for that, even though he probably won't be attending this, because he won't be our superintendent anymore, but I wanted to make sure that we were included in this for our new superintendent. And the same issues that I think all the towns are having, the challenges and opportunities regarding the pandemic.
So the Town Council RTM and the Board of Ed liaison, we had one at the beginning of October, is that correct, Lee? And I think most of the conversation was about, about the educational sort of hybrid model, would you say?
Pretty much.
Yeah, yeah. And we have one, I think, oh, Kristi, that's just absolutely beautiful. We have, and then we have our meeting next week as well. We have, and then we have our meeting next week as well.
Yes, we do.
All right. And then Beth, we are meeting on Wednesday, is that correct for our liaison meeting with the AGSA? So we will get back to that. At the present moment, we don't have anyone covering trails, so there is no response to that. Groton Scholarship, Lee?
I am very excited. We will meet for my first time on Thursday on Zoom. I'm going to be meeting people. I have no idea who they are because I'm not sure we ever was part of it, were part of it, but we are now, so I will meet these people on Thursday.
Thank you, Lee, so much for taking that up. I really appreciate that. Superintendent search, so we have had our first round of interviews and we'll be going to our second round. And that's sort of where we are on that. We've been actually meeting quite a lot of each other. Poor Dean joined the, joined the board and he's just seen us a lot. Athletic fields, Jay.
Yes, so we've been meeting all summer and into the fall. This Thursday, they will be presenting the plan that they hope to forward to the town council for any final comments. I've invited the board to that meeting. Of course, it's an open meeting, so anybody can go to the town website and request a link to Thursday's meeting to see that presentation. And that's a comprehensive needs assessment for athletic fields across the town.
Thank you, Jay, for serving on that. And so the next is the consent agenda, which is all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and acted on by one motion. Can I have a motion, not an E motion, but a motion for the consent agenda? I got Rosemary, can I have a second?
Second.
All right. All the, any discussion? Super, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. And I don't know. Caitlin, do you have any idea? Oh, it's gone. So, but the board would like to say thank you to Donors Choose, who has made a donation of books to the Shannon Joby at Claude Chester Elementary School. We had Bob Books Sight Words for Kindergarten, Animal Stories, Nonfiction Sight Word Reader, Parent Pack at various levels, a Bob Books Set One Beginner Readers and Bob Books Set Two, Advancing Beginners and Little, First Little Comics, Parent Pack, various levels. And then we've also had Daughters of the American Revolution has made a donation of 50 masks to Central Office. We would like to say thank you to all of them. Everyone has changed. Jay, I look up and, and Dr. Ginear has left?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Oh, there you are. Oh, you're eating.
We don't usually get dinner until nine o'clock on these nights.
I'm here, keep going.
All right, I just, I got worried. That was the best thing that has happened to me all day. Jay, would you be, would you be willing to read Old Business, the motion, please?
Yes, I move to approve a second reading, policy P4118.237/5141.8, face masks coverings.
So this is a second meeting. Susan or Lee, if, if you would be willing to kind of talk about what would look different?
So some of the board members had looked at this, there was some language in there about needing incentives to wear masks. And we thought, no, we don't need incentives. You wear a mask if you're going to be in our schools to safeguard. And we wash our hands and we keep six feet apart. So that language was corrected and probably a few other things that we were given some tips about. So we have edited, revised so that the language is clear.
Any for the discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor to approve as a second reading, policy P4118.237/5141.8?
Yeah, there's two, two, actually it impacts both of those.
Yes.
Policies.
So we really should have them separate, huh?
It actually counts for both of them.
Okay. So all those in favor of that motion, please say, oh, aye, aye, discussion, we already done that? Okay, so any more discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Rita, would you be willing to read on our new business, the motion, please, the first one?
Okay, to approve the 2021 Board of Education meeting schedule, which was in our packets.
Dr. Ginear?
Thirty-second explanation. Next December, not this coming December, but December of 21, I think we all thought that the first meeting on the 6th of December was going to be a COW, and the second meeting on the 13th would be a board meeting. Actually, the one that we voted on said that 6th was a policy meeting, and we just want to change. If you look at your, your sheet, it says now the 6th of December of 2021 will be, at six o'clock will be a COW meeting. So we'll get two meetings.
Thank you. Yes.
Any for the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the 2021 Board of Education meeting schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Jay, you oppose? Okay. Abstain? The motion has carried. Jane, would you please read the motion for number two, please?
Yes, to approve the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement.
Can I have a second? I have Liz. My understanding that we wanted to approve this, but that we were then going to have Andrea and Jay kind of get together and to think about where this was going to be.
And also to change the goals, they were going to amend the goals on the board's debt. And then I think we'll have a larger discussion at the next COW, where, where we would like this to be. But I think it'd be a nice step forward for the committee to have the statement adopted.
Any others?
Just for anyone who hasn't been following along on this, Dr. Ginear and the board created this DEI committee back in June, I believe it was, and they've all been working all summer and fall to develop, rather than just a, an instant statement, you know, something that really came organically from the faculty, the staff, and something that was thoughtful and we could all support. And I just want to, again, say thank you to that committee for working on this all.
Thank you, Jay. Any other discussion on this? I think Ms. Joan asked me if, who seconded this one? Does anyone remember? Who seconded the motion? Rosemary?
I will.
Thank you. All right. So all those in favor of the motion to approval of the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Rosemary? Would you be willing to read the motion for number three, please?
I would be delighted.
Thank you.
Motion is to approve the preferred class size guidelines.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
I think that was Dean, Joan?
It was.
Okay.
It's going to be on the record somewhere.
Thank you. And can we have discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Liz?
Dr. Ginear, I'm looking at the special areas. Is physical education the preferred size of 30 students? Maximum, preferred maximum class size of 30 students, is that K through 12?
I'm going to let Susan answer that question.
Susan?
I would say yes, it is, but I would say that typically in the elementary school, it would be the class size of whatever class. So it would probably mirror more the elementary class sizes, but both the middle and the high school, because of their large gyms, they're able to take on 30.
Does then, does that need to be delineated in this document?
I thought we had it six through 12. It's not.
No, it just says physical education. That's it, 30. And that's why I'm asking.
So we, I think that's an important point, Liz. I think we need to clarify that's really for the six through 12. Otherwise, elementaries will be within their own class size.
Thank you, Liz, for finding that. Any other discussion about that?
The CBA has got in it somewhere, maximum class sizes. I presume this, these numbers are in accord with the agreement with the bargaining unit?
Yes, and they're just preferred. This is not written in stone.
All right, thank you.
Dean, just to let you know, this is sort of what is used for budget purposes because it helps us determine how many, it helps the district determine how many teachers, et cetera, that they're going to need with the preferred class size.
All right, thank you.
That's why we're doing it now.
So, Kim?
Liz?
So if there needs to be that delineation on physical education, does that mean, what does that mean in terms of our voting for this?
So I think we would need to do an amendment to the first motion to add that?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Joan, who keeps me honest, says yes. So I would take a motion, if there's no further discussion on this, I will take a motion for the amendment on the first motion that would delineate the six through 12 in the, in the physical education. Can I have a?
No move.
No move? Can I have a second to that? I have Rosemary. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amended motion for the delineation of the physical education, six through 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Ms. Joan, the motion is carried. Do I need to go back to the first one?
No.
No.
Okay.
Now, let Mike answer. Let Mike answer, please.
No.
She's like, she's like from, like a voice from above, right?
Right.
Right.
Very, very celestial.
Yes. Dean, would you be willing to read the motion for number four, please?
Number four. All right. The motion is to approve the name of the new elementary school on the Cutler site.
So now, we haven't.
I was going to say, what's the, what's the name?
Yeah.
Name, the name is the Mystic River Magnet School.
Mystic River Magnet.
That should be, that really should be the motion.
That's right. That should be the motion.
So Dean, I did ask for a second on that, so would you like to read the motion again?
Well, I'll make the motion again. I move that we, that we named the new elementary school on the Cutler site, the Mystic River Magnet School.
Can I have a second to that, please? I have Liz. Any more discussion? Or any discussion, not anymore, that was rude. Any discussion? Jay?
I just want to say that I know there are folks that would like to see the retention of the Carl Cutler name just because of his deep ties to this area as a founder of the Mystic Seaport, bringing the Charles Morgan here, our connection with the Seaport. But I respect the work of the committee and the principals that were involved and, and Mr. Streeter. And so I am going to vote for this. I think it is a, a well-thought-through and well-supported idea.
Can I just add, Jay, that the committee really did speak to naming parts of the building, possibly after famous people? And that was brought up, that to be able to name, whether it's an auditorium or a gymnasium, after Cutler. And the same thing was true at the other schools. So that would probably be another committee that we would have to do. We actually talked about that also in the Groton Middle School Naming Committee, to be able to name parts or to do a timeline where you could really do famous people from our community. So I don't think we've forgotten those ideas. I just think there are things that we need to think about and work with the board on to put into place.
Dean?
If I might. The high school I went to in Stanford, Susan, you may, you may remember this one. It used to be called Ripowam High School. Some years later, it stopped being Ripowam High School, it went through other things. It became, I think it became a middle school. The building is there, the name Ripowam is still used, but I think as far as the alums are concerned, the school is gone.
Yeah.
So when you recycle a name, you, it's for honoring the person, if you're named it after a person, but it's also to keep the alums happy that their school's continued, et cetera. We saw this with the Noah's School, people were very upset about, you know, the continuity and all of that. So to the extent we would seek to be keeping a name, Freeman Hathaway, which didn't happen, or Carl Cutler, in order to let people feel a continuity of community, I think a lot of people would say, Cutler Middle's gone. You can call it Cutler Elementary all you want, Cutler Middle's gone. So I think it would just be to honor Carl Cutler. And I think something along the way, not the whole school, part of it, or some facility, some feature, you know, wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah.
I'm really sorry, even though I didn't attend Freeman Hathaway, I'm really sorry, the name Freeman Hathaway has disappeared. I don't know where it's gone. So.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes. So Dean, Freeman Hathaway, that, that committee made sure that there's a, when you walk in Northeast Academy next to the auditorium, there's a beautiful plaque that describes who Freeman Hathaway is, and I'm hoping that the same thing will happen with Carl Cutler and all Espy Butler, which is also going to be part of the new Mystic River Magnet School and Quadchester. So we have three very important people we need to honor in that one building.
All right, thank you.
Any more discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, ready? All those in favor of naming the, the new elementary school at the Cutler site, Mystic River Magnet School? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Rita, would you be willing to read number five, please?
Yes, to approve the name of the new elementary school, Thames River Magnet School on the West Side site.
Oh, thank you for doing that. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
That would be Liz. Any discussion? Sorry, I said it in my head, I just didn't say it out loud. My guess is it's the same as what we had just talked about in terms of, of the, of the historical stuff. All those in favor, please say, all those in favor of the motion to name the element, new elementary school at the West Side site, Thames River Magnet School, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? That has carried.
Wow, great.
Yay.
All right. Jay?
Jim, I just wanted to point out, I got one vote and I'm hoping that a custodial closet would be named after me.
Your name was definitely brought up, so maybe someplace.
And Dr., and Dr. Mitchell.
And Dr. Mitchell.
It could be the next closet.
Can I, Jane? No, Jay, excuse me, Jay, would you be willing to read the motion for number six, please? Jane, can you do seven? And Liz, would you be willing to do number eight?
Yep.
Okay. So Jay, number six, please.
Yes, I move to approve the fiscal year 2022 CIP proposals.
Can I have a second? I got Rosemary. Any discussion on these? Can I have a second? I got Rosemary. Any discussion on these?
Okay.
All right, hearing.
To approve the magnet themes for the two.
I got, we got a vote on it, my love. Or Ms. Joan from above would be screaming at me. So all those in favor to approve the motion to, to approve the fiscal year 2022 CIP proposals, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain? That motion has carried. My friend, Jane.
To approve the magnet themes for the two new elementary schools and Charles Barnum Elementary School.
I'm gonna get asked for a second, and then we'll go into discussion about what those themes are. Can I have a second, please?
Liz.
All right, the themes are. Ms. Ms. Susan Austin, would you be willing to, Liz, do you have a comment?
I just have a question. Are we assigning, is this what we're asking us to do, is to assign a theme to a school? Is that what we're doing? Yeah?
Just, just approving three.
I'm sorry.
My understanding is that we are to approve the three magnet themes, and is it not the district's responsibility to put which one goes to which school?
Yeah. If they get, we'll come back. We'll come back and make recommendations.
I want to remind the board that a PYP is a way of teaching and a philosophy. It doesn't necessarily mean a theme. I just want to remind you.
You are right.
To have it at all five elementary.
That would be awesome.
All right.
The number one choice was environmental marine life sciences. Number two was active exploration, play and ingenuity. And number three was discovery academy or discovery magnet with nurturing play and create, or creativity and curiosity.
Board, I have a question. Is it okay that we have all three of these themes together?
Yeah, because we're not assigning them yet. We're just saying, these are the, the group of three themes we're gonna develop and then report out on August 9th. I mean.
August?
Sorry.
Are you in a different year here, Jim? Mike, I'm calling you Jim.
Do you know something about the weather that we don't know, Mike?
Almighty.
Do we have, do I have, do we have, do I have a sense from people about that? The three, the three themes? Can we lump them all together, folks, or do you want them to be separate?
Lump them together.
Okay. Any further discussion on those themes? Hearing none. Susan, I'm gonna start, but I'm gonna ask that you name the themes to make sure that it is recorded correctly, if that's possible. So, um, the motion is to approve the following magnet themes for the two new elementary schools and Charles Barnum Elementary School, and they are.
And I'll make sure I, I check this with Joan. Environmental marine life science is one. Active exploration, play and ingenuity is two. And the third one is discovery magnet, nurturing creativity and curiosity.
Discovery academy.
Right, but I think we got rid of the academy thing. I think we're gonna do magnets all the way.
Fine, fine.
All those, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
I'm abstaining.
That we just got the abstain? Ms. Joan?
Yes, I got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, we are moving through.
Got one more.
All right, no, we've got two more, actually, but go ahead, Liz. Can you do number eight?
Absolutely. To approve the recommended neighborhood zone plan.
Guy, please have a second.
Second.
That was from Jane. Any further discussion on that? We did have a lengthy discussion at the beginning of the meeting. I think that that started like at six, but it feels like forever. Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the recommended neighborhood zone plan, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain? The motion has carried. Dr. Grenier, thank you for working so hard and getting that done.
I just want to say, I feel like the board just, just put in like five beams into the Groton 2020. This was a huge action tonight. Thank you.
I'm gonna read the two items that we added at the very beginning. The first one is to confirm the Groton Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools approve the implementation of a virtual mentoring program using the video conference platform Zoom. The district will operate the virtual program during the 2020 to 2021 school year in accordance with the guideline set forth by the Governor's Prevention Partnership. Can I have a second?
So moved. Second.
I got Rita, and Dr. Grenier, can you talk about that?
Sharon Schiff, who is our mentor coordinator, recently attended a webinar, and the, the Governors Prevention Partnership encouraged people to participate, but they said the superintendent and the board had to approve, first of all, it had to be an acceptable platform, which we have is Zoom, and, and it, and the board and superintendent had to approve, at least for this year, using a video platform to have virtual mentorship. This would be great. We, we have lots of kids who need mentors, and we have several mentors. So this is, this would allow us to pick it up and continue.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Hearing none. Oh, Andrea.
Yeah, I just want to say I heartily approve this and endorse it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor of the Groton Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools approve the implementation of a virtual mentoring program using the video conference platform Zoom. The district will operate the virtual program during the 2020, 2021 school year in accordance with the guidelines set forth by the Governors Prevention Partnership. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain? That motion has carried. The last one is to approve the Alliance District School Building Budget Proposal. May I have a second, please?
Second.
I've got Jane. Any discussion on that?
We have to get this to Hartford tomorrow.
Nothing like pressure, Mike. Nothing like pressure, you know?
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor to approve the Alliance District School Building Budget Proposal, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain? That motion has carried. We are now.
With quick drying ink.
All right, so now we're going on to letters of communication and comments by board members. Jay?
Yes, I'll try to keep this quick. First of all, for anybody who's listening, we receive a lot of emails from parents, staff, faculty. Believe me that we, we consider all of them very carefully. We, sometimes one or two board members will, will respond. We don't all respond to everyone, but we are listening. We are trying to walk that tightrope between the needs of the parents, the needs of the, the faculty. And we have to rely on, on the administration, the health district. But believe me, we, we all are deeply concerned about it. I also want to mention that Carolyn Wilson from GASP, the Groton Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, reported to us that the Connecticut Association of Prevention Professionals awarded Dr. Grenier their Education Sector All-Star Award. And I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Yes, that definitely will get you a plaque on a, on a custodial closet, I think.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yes. We may have to add, to increase its size.
Rita, do you have anything?
Um, I received many letters, again, like Jay said, from parents and from staff members. And we hope that in the future, we will have a full discussion at a COW meeting about remedies for the hybrid system and how we can assist teachers and students throughout the district to improve our learning.
Yep. Dean?
Well. Thank you all for having me. I'm unsure what to say. Thank, I, I, I hope it remains collegial. Fair warning, I will not always vote with the, with the rest of you. There may be things we differ on. I hope we can, you know, continue to work together on what counts, which is the education of the children. And not get lost in lots of different little forests.
Yep. Thank you, Dean. Jane?
Yep, I just wanted to say that working on the search committee is very long, in good, a lot of depth, and I find it to be a very melancholy experience.
Rosemary?
I'm with, am I on? I'm with Jane. I also received emails and chats with, with mostly parents. And I also attended a Zoom GASP meeting, and they have a number of announcements that are pertinent for us. And that's their increasing the youth engagement, especially for the upcoming events to observe Medication Abuse Awareness Month. And that'll be announced on, on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We're also collaborating with Groton Town Police for Halloween event by, in Poquannock Bridge, and that'll be announced. We're also completing a 2020 youth school survey, and that should be done by the end of the month. And we're completing the community survey report, which is almost done. And we just started a new thing for kids, for students. And it's a con, essay contest for doses of prevention. And that actually sometimes carries monetary rewards, but I, I did not get a chance to research it and see if they came through in the, in the age of COVID.
Thank you, Rosemary. Thank you, Rosemary. Liz?
I received a number of letters and emails from teachers, as well as a lot of parents. And I'm glad, I'm really glad to see that we will, as Rita said, in the future COW, that we will be addressing, you know, especially our supports for our teaching staff and as well as our kids. Because that's, that's of primary importance at this time. So I look forward to those discussions.
Thank you, Liz. Andrea?
I received many letters and, and communications. And I want everybody to know that we're all touched deeply by them, and we take them extremely seriously, and we're moving forward on them. And the other thing that I have is I, a parent called me on, on my phone, and I've been trying to return her call, but the number that I have is no longer in service. So I must have transposed a number, some number there. So if that parent is listening, I asked for her to call me again. Thank you.
Kim?
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Me too.
We had a, an incredibly wonderful experience with the Martin Luther King.
Yes.
And I was reduced to tears, which turned out okay, because I had a lot of Kleenex in bed. And, but I also have been given a great deal of hope for the future again.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to say also. I just want to congratulate all the scholars and the FISH scholars. It was, it was just wonderful to see. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew, for all your help with, with the students.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I, I appreciate that, and I'll send that to the, to the scholars. But I want everybody to know what courage it took for those students to reach down deep. I always, I always start our meetings with, I, I started with something that happened to me. I call it my Mr. Brown story. And then I get them to tell their Mr. Brown stories, and that took a lot of courage. So.
Yes, yes. The food wasn't as good.
I just want to let you know that I too have shared as many emails as everyone else has, and I've talked to a couple of parents and staff members as well. And Jay, I appreciate your comment about the fact that we do take what is being said to us seriously, and we do look at that. And Rita, to your point, I think every meeting we have, we talk about the hybrid, and we talk about what's happening or not happening, and talk about where do we need to have the more deeper dive. And so I am appreciative of the fact that we're doing that. Also, just to let you know that I was informed today that Dr. Grenier has been approved to be our interim superintendent until December 31st. So I just want to let you know that. So also just to, yay. Or not yay, depending on, I guess. So please notice at the end of our agenda topic, we, our agenda, there's a, a listing of our virtual meetings that are there.
And did you forget Lee?
Yep.
Is, Lee's not, Lee, are you here?
Of course I am.
Oh, Lee, I can't see you.
I don't know why.
There you are.
Oh, I've been here all along.
Oh, Lee, I am so sorry. I, you're not on my, you're not on my screen.
It's a number. Don't know why, but in any case, I immediately emailed Andrea to tell her what a good job and our scholars did. I am getting many of the same letters that all of you are getting on our GS, on our email. And I'm looking for solutions. We are all looking for solutions. That's it.
And Lee, once again, I am so apologetic that you're not on my.
It's okay.
Jay?
By the way, Lee, we actually volunteered you to do Cook for Nets here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was, I was remiss in going too fast to, to go over the MLK scholar. I just want everyone to know that they can still go to mlktrustfund.org/live, and there's a replay still playing there, mlktrustfund.org/live. And you can also donate.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Do we have, Dr. Grenier?
Well, talking about donating, I was explaining to somebody that that night, the committee gave out $320,000.
Wow.
It's, it's, it's stunning. It's a quarter of a, a third of a million dollars. It's amazing.
Wow. And that came, a great deal of that came directly from the, from the community. And as Dr. Mitchell said, there's one, one woman who sends in $10 a month, every month. And he reminded us about the, the idea of giving in terms of, of what you can afford, and how that just, that probably means as much as, or even it does mean as much as a $20,000 scholarship. Yep.
Any, any agenda items?
Besides the hybrid?
And aside the hybrid and COVID, and.
No.
Nothing else, nothing else to talk about.
No.
New schools.
I, I just want to say, you guys, this was a longer than normal meeting. Um, and however, I, I'm just so excited because we really just put down some footprints for the district to then take off and do the work that they need to do for the, for the district, for the elementary schools. Like, this was really like a very big meeting, so, um, yay. Congratulations. And Andrea?
There you are. Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second? All right, that's Rosemary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? The motion has carried. Good night, everyone. Thank you for your hard work.
Good night, everyone.